Welcome to the June 3, 2021 Board Business and Conference Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. If we could please rise, we're actually going to be able to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Regal, could you call a roll, please?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Plecher?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Here, thank you, Bob. Ms. Minji is out of town tonight, sends her regrets. It's very nice to actually see human beings in person. It's been a while. To celebrate, we turned off the air conditioner, which I understand took some kind of electrical hit yesterday, so we're sorry about that. I just want to ask our board members when you speak, please lean into the mics because we're going to get some practice doing what our teachers have been doing for the last year. We're going to be zooming also, and the microphone for the Zoom, I don't know where it is in the room, but we need to make sure that that mic picks up our voices, okay? In addition to having a broken air conditioner, I think this is a, I can tell you truthfully, this is the first board meeting I've attended actually wearing pants in 14 months, and I think that our other board members could tell you some similar things, so so there's advantages and disadvantages to being back. With that being said, I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the May 20, 2021 regular public board meeting. Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Dominic Recuti Award recipients. Dr. Rucci?
Sure.
Always a pleasure to honor and recognize both staff and students in the district. And this is, this is the Dominic Recuti Humanitarian Award. One of the recipients this evening has been described as someone who is involved, passionate, a well-rounded individual who takes pride in our school and our community. She's a student representative to the school board, a member of Student Senate, a member of the Haverford High School Equity Team, a member of the Track and Field Team, and serves, as her nominator Megan Malligan referred to her, as an incredible role model for all youth who have the privilege to meet her and interact with her. Familiar to our board, and her voice is familiar to the members of the public who've been watching our board meetings, Erica Borby. What a year you've had at serving as a board rep for all the meetings that we've had this year, Erica. Nominated by Nicole Battistelli, this dynamic duo have had another incredible year. Together throughout this last year, we all as a community have been presented with a variety of obstacles due to the COVID-19 pandemic. These two became our essential workers throughout the entire community. They spent their own time, their own money, on groceries for families who were left with no other option than to depend upon the kindness of others. They worked with Food Services, our Transportation Department, and staff all across the district to organize school lunch deliveries throughout the community. As time went on, the Haverford Township Education Foundation was able to raise funds donated by our community members here within the township to supply families with much-needed gift cards to grocery stores and for other essentials. Kathleen and Jocelyn did all of this while they maintained the high level of support they are known to consistently provide for students and our families throughout the entire community. The recipients of the Dominic Recuti Humanitarian Service Award to Jocelyn Drukus and Kathleen McAndrews, our social workers. And our final recipient this evening is joining us via Zoom because this was too close of a window for him to be able to arrive here from the class that he teaches at Villanova after he's finished working with our students at the high school. Nominated by Becky Mortland, and a second nomination for Dr. Jeremy Tomaszewski, submitted by Megan Malligan. Dr. Tomaszewski, some of the words used to describe him, unfailingly student-centered, cares for his students as individuals, and seeks to grow and learn himself as a teacher. Over the past four years, he's actively sought opportunities for his students not only to be involved in science in meaningful ways at the high school, but to share their passion for science with our district elementary students. His was the inspiration to bring the Haverford Science Academy to the school district of Haverford Township. He is unflagging, flagging in his unwilling, in his willingness to set his own projects aside, to support a colleague, to offer advice. Never has his generosity of spirit and dedication to our Haverford community of students, teachers, and staff been more apparent than this past pandemic school year. However, we have no doubt that Jeremy's efforts to support the district as we moved into our online virtual environment were critical to our, to our success. He guided each of us through this process. He has sacrificed countless hours the past summer, as well as throughout the school year, to ensure that the process of moving our programs online was as seamless as possible. He's been a pivotal member in getting the high school faculty advisory committee together and running. He serves as a constant reminder of a leadership and pillar of successful communication and procedure with this, with this venture. Dr. Jeremy Tomaszewski, Haverford High School Science Teacher. Congratulations for being a recipient of the Dominic Recuti Humanitarian Service Award.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate you all.
Thanks, Dr. Rucci, and congratulations to all of the award recipients. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Anna, how many do we have tonight? And are they Zoom, or are they live, or mix? When you, when you, are they going to speak at that mic? When you go to the mic, please state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, and then we'll ask you to finish up, okay?
Anna, we have, we do have the names here, Anna.
Yep. Our first speaker is going to be Christine Barnes.
I just don't know if you can hear me. Can, I have to read this off of my phone. Okay, here I go. My name's Chris Barnes, and I'm here first to give a shout out to the Special Ed Program in Haverford. Our daughter Jane is a student with an intellectual disability who has been well-served by Haverford School District. I am here to express our gratitude. Jane started at age six in the incredible Miriam Miller's Learning Support Classroom at Manoa. She moved through the middle school with the help of Dan Haran, Sue Mann, and Catherine Hoag, through the high school with Kim Dislack, Donna McMahon, and Pete Donaghy, and she is now exiting the PATH program at age 21 with thanks to Mary Henneken and Nancy O'Halloran, who have helped Jane to work confidently at both the Haverford Creck and Safe Faith Preschool, where Jane will continue after she takes her diploma later this month. The list of names that I am not including is many, as through these many years, Jane has been supported by amazing principals, teachers, secretaries, band directors, club sponsors, coaches, bus drivers, nurses, theater directors, DCIU staff, paraprofessionals, best buddies, and lots of students and friends who have gone out of their way to help Jane actively participate in so much that our school district offers. We are incredibly thankful to all of these people for helping shape Jane into the incredible young adult she has become. Over the years, we have watched our district take many steps forward in providing so many more opportunities for students with special needs to be included in the larger school community. Inclusion is an important priority to our family, and we are proud that our district has signed on to programming to promote inclusion for all students, including those who operate on the edges of our school culture. We have a son who was part of the LGBTQ community, and it was through the Basis Program that he found supportive guidance from administrators and was empowered to raise his community to the surface, so it became more visible and appreciated within the high school. I think we can all agree that our current students in Haverford are unbelievably kind, and we go out of their way to make sure that other people feel safe and included in our schools. The Basis Program is a good start to formalizing an intentional approach to inclusion, a way to build bridges between student groups who tend to feel very comfortable at school and between those who feel a little less, a little more isolated. We ask that the school board and administrators continue to support the Basis Program. In this vein, I would like to express agreement with the school board signing on to promote anti-racism. I believe we all want to live in a Havertown that is welcoming and free from disrespect, and I believe we can achieve that with education on what racism is and its history in our country. When I heard a former Haverford student give a lecture about the history of slavery in Haverford Township, I was floored. When I looked at this, when I look at the statistics related to overrepresentation of black people in Americans prisons, and then I hear a resident talk to the school board about how data shows a similar overrepresentation of suspension and expulsions for students of color in our school district, I am highly concerned. When my daughter asked me, "What does that mean when a neighbor says they are no longer shopping at a local grocery store because it is changing?" I am reminded that racism is alive and well in our town. Our school can help provide education on how to recognize and address these issues. Thank you for listening. Thank you for taking on these challenges. We are grateful for your leadership, and you're listening to all of the perspectives brought to you before, brought before you at these meetings. People may have different opinions, but I believe we all want the same things in the end, well-educated students, both academically and civically. I want you to know, our family has been well-served by all of your efforts over the years, and we cannot thank you enough. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alexis Pasternak.
Hi, thank you. My name is Alexis Pasternak. I live at 609 Woodland Drive, Havertown. I'm just going to keep it short. I've sent numerous letters to the school board. I've never heard back from one school board member, not once. I'm kind of, you know, I'm kind of guessing that, you know, unless I'm part of HCAN, I'm not a real stakeholder in this community, okay? I have lived here since 1979. My mother still lives here. My mother is, is, her boyfriend, he's not white. I think that's progress, okay? I'm really getting sick of this equity anti-racism stuff, where you really can't seem to define for us what anti-racism actually entails. Please, can you please define what it really means, okay? You haven't done it. Your resolution last year, you left so many people out of that conversation. That is upsetting to me. I am a stakeholder. My son is going to be in this district for seven more years. I want him to be here. I love Havertown. I don't want to move anywhere else. You're not going to push me out. You're not going to do it. You're not going to teach my son that his father, who is a police officer, is a horrible human being. If you, please do not ever show my son a BLM protest video again. If you do, please have the courtesy to give a warning ahead of time so that I can view it, and I can make the decision for him to view it. I don't care if you want to have white fragility and white privilege and all of that stuff in your life. Don't teach it to my kid. Teach it to your own kids. Go about your business. Please, leave my kid out of it. I am, I'm really saddened by the turn this district has taken. I really am. And I am upset because we have not been heard. I have not been heard. I just, I'm getting the impression that only certain people in this district matter anymore. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Claus.
Thanks, Beth Claus. I live at 638 Woodcrest Avenue in Ardmore. First of all, I just want to thank all of you for your dedication and your hard work this year. Such an incredibly challenging school year, so I just wanted to lead with that. As a parent of a fourth grader and a sixth grader in the district, and as a school social worker, I am so very appreciative of the Basis work and initiative being done in our district, and of the long history and commitment the school district has made to social and emotional learning. This work, which aims to promote inclusion, emotional well-being, and a sense of belonging, truly benefits all students in our district. Social, emotional learning, and diversity and inclusion efforts will better prepare all students for success in their futures as they navigate a diverse and multicultural society. I'd like to end with a quote from an article in the Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development Magazine called "Education Update." "We owe our students an education that centers their lives and explicitly addresses the socio-political context. This will not only prepare our students to engage civically and peacefully across difference, but will also allow them to become the change-makers and the leaders that we desperately need." Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Mark Verdi. Next up, Sarah Fay.
Hello, my name's Sarah. I live at 47 Waverly Road in Havertown. I would like to address the mask policy at Haverford School District. At the last board meeting, you went over the 2020 school plan opening, but masks were not mentioned. Most of the COVID prevention policies, including mask mandates in school, are all about reducing adult anxiety at the expense of the health and well-being of our children. It's concerning to me that there has been no effort to do the one thing we know would decrease transmission of the virus, which is boosting our immune systems. You recently got a grant from Giant Supermarket. Perhaps that money could be used for workshops for kids and guardians on how to boost your immune system through nutrition. Pharma products and mask mandates are not the only answer to preventing COVID-19 syndrome. As people get free doughnuts and beer for getting a vaccine, there has been little done to address the low levels of vitamin D in our population in general, especially in children. Sitting inside for months on end, staring at screens results in low vitamin D levels. That is a fact. Parents, adoptive parents, and legal guardians have primary responsibility for the health and welfare of their children. Governments and school districts may not assert this natural right. Requiring that schools, that students wear masks is a violation of civil liberties. Masks do little to nothing to protect children's health. Studies and medical literature support this statement. Moreover, very few children have contracted COVID-19, and nearly zero have died from it. More children died from the flu in 2019 than COVID-19 in 2020. You could research this on the CDC website, yet we never required students to wear masks to prevent the flu. Masks harm children's health. Studies show that masks lower oxygen intake, which can lead to acute or chronic injury that can worsen underlying health conditions. Alarmingly, interfering with the breathing of a child is one indicator of child abuse. Children are in danger of social and emotional harm due to masking. Masks are a tool for social distancing, which medical literature clearly equates to social isolation, a human rights violation. Mask-wearing is especially cruel to special education students and those with mental health challenges. At the last boarding meeting, one of you stated, "We need to keep kids as far apart as possible in the next school year." After a year and a half of isolation, shouldn't your goal be to get them back to face-to-face interaction? Students' learning is curbed due to masks. Data is emerging to show learning loss, especially in speech and reading. For special education children or English language learners, masks can be a direct violation of least restrictive environment under the special education law. The U.S. is one of the only countries using mask mandates on young children. In Europe, where COVID rates were high, even at the height of the pandemic, children in elementary school were never required to wear masks to attend school. In the leveling up, leveling update to families emails that went out yesterday, you said you reversed course due to a meeting with, and I quote, "Delaware County School District leaders and the medical experts with whom we've been engaged throughout this entire pandemic, but there is no transparency as to who these medical experts you've been engaged with are. This lack of transparency needs to change." I have seen a lack of critical thinking in regards to addressing the mask mandates by the Haverford School Board. It's not a skill that everyone has, but it's what's needed now. We can't have people following along with quote-unquote "health experts" when there is only one voice. Dr. Fauci follows the CDC. The Pennsylvania Department of Health follows the CDC. The Chester County Health officials follow the CDC. Do you see there is only a small number of quote-unquote "health experts" even allowed to have an opinion? If our children wrote a paper and cited the same source over and over again, they would receive a failing grade. Why do we expect less of the adults in charge? We don't need followers. We need people in charge that can think critically. I hope going forward that you are up to that challenge for the 2021-22 school year. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Helene Conroy Smith.
Good evening. My name is Helene Conroy Smith. I live at 32 East West Wood Park Drive. Let's talk about equality. It's providing everyone with opportunity and having equal chance at them. Equity ends with everyone receiving the same. The CRT Initiative in the school district is real under the guise of diversity, equity, and inclusion, which are huge buzzwords. Our district is working on a national platform using words like "global citizen," "anti-racism," "disenfranchised." It's the mission, it's in the mission statement. Our district needs to work towards our needs here in Havertown. Your taxpayers as a whole have been disenfranchised. The discrimination occurring is, is definitely happening to our elderly stakeholders who are driven out of their homes due to an almost 43% school tax increase over the past 12 years. This year alone, another $155 will be taxed on to the median homeowner. Do you think that's fair or equitable? How about payments that you're making out for diversity, equity, inclusion? 16, almost $16,000 to be a member of PSBA. We're promoting DVCE, another equity program, for $12,000. $13,000 for equity and sage wellness. And net, for hiring, diversity recruitment retention. It's $175 to $295 per person to attend a job fair or workshop, depending on what we've paid out already. How much are we spending on critical thinking, math, and reading? Our national, I think that we need to spend more time on our education. Nationally recognized assessments such as the SATs, right? They're scores that test ability and children's knowledge. Over the past four years, Haverford scores have remained stagnant. 2019, 356 kids took the SATs. 596 was the score for math. 583 verbal. 1179.6 is your total. Go back to 2016, 356 kids took it. 505 in math, 523 in verbal, and the composite was 1579. We're not seeing changes. Districts with similar demographics, such as Downingtown STEM and Avon Grove School District, had scores in the mid-600 range. I think our school district needs to focus on our children and not on agenda. I'm going to give you a little story. I have a child here in the school. My child heard someone using an inappropriate derogatory term, and she spoke up. And she said, "We don't use that kind of language here in school. We don't say that kind of thing." And that child then went off on my daughter and called her a cracker. And you know what she said? "We don't use that kind of language here in school." And she gave that child a lesson about how important it is to be inclusive. She's inclusive. My children are inclusive. They don't need to be taught to be inclusive. I work with them. I am their parent, and so is my husband. We take care of our children. And I'm asking you all to stop, cease, and desist with the political agenda on our children. Thank you.
That's it for our speakers list?
Good evening. My name is Adrian Seltzer, and I am the Vice President of the Mainline Branch of the NACP.
We do need your, we do need your address.
My address is 705 Greatthorne Road, Wynwood. Haverford School District is in our, is one of six school districts in our jurisdiction.
Ma'am, if you're not a resident of the township, you can't speak in public session. You can certainly submit comments to the board. We'd be happy to read them, but those are the rules that we operate by.
Well, some of the comments aren't really directed to the board.
Ma'am, ma'am, you're out of order. I'm sorry.
That's nothing, no.
Please, you know, please sit down.
For the person who wanted a definition of anti-racism, it's anti-segregation.
Please.
And equity is different than equality.
Folks, this isn't the forum for, for a public dialogue, okay? We're running a meeting. You're, you're welcome to have a discussion outside.
Hi, everybody. My name's Jeff Kowalski. I live at 129 Hastings Avenue, Havertown. I am a resident. First of all, it saddens me to see people so divided on some issues that I think probably should not be this divisive. First thing I'll mention is I grew up in Tulsa, Oklahoma. For a long time, people didn't know about what happened in Tulsa, Oklahoma. For a long time, people didn't know about what happened in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and a lot of people are just learning about it now, 100 years ago. A huge part of our city where Black Americans lived was torched, and 300 some odd people were killed. Now, I would call that racism. I hope everybody in this place would call that racism. It's wrong. It was based on prejudice. It was based on racist types of feelings that the whites of Tulsa had to the blacks who had made that quite a prosperous area of town. Now, I also, when I was a kid in Tulsa, was given the opportunity by my mom to get in an organization that got us across to the north side of town where Black people lived and white people lived on the south side. You can say that's just the way it is. But it's also part of a kind of an ongoing racist structure in our country. And it's not something that's good for our country, I don't think. I think we need to work on trying to find ways to live together where we support one another. We treat people with respect and dignity, whether you're Black, whether you're white, whether you're Asian. My younger daughter is Asian. We adopted her from South Korea. You may have heard, you know, you've seen the pictures of some Asian people being punched out and demeaned in different ways as well. So what I'm trying to say is that the reason I want to try to find ways to hold up people who have been marginalized or against whom prejudices have kept them from realizing their full potential and their full selves is because my own faith tradition tells me that what I have to do is try to empathize, and that means trying to look at somebody, including the people who say some things that I find not quite to my liking, but I'm looking at you now and I'm saying, "I really try to hear what you're saying as well." And I'm looking for more harmony and more understanding among people on different sides of this in this country. That is really what we need at this point in our life as a democratic republic and as a nation that needs to come together instead of tearing itself apart at the seams. And I do support efforts to make sure that kids know that they need to treat each other with respect, dignity, and support, regardless of what their background is. If it's... I hate that somebody called somebody a cracker or any other kind of word that's demeaning based on superficial aspects of their personality or their personhood. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you to all our speakers this evening. I'm just going to read the mission statement for the district because I find that that's a useful thing to do. Is there another speaker?
Okay, I'm Colin McCrossen. I live at 600 Georges Lane, Ardmore, Haverford Township. I'm just reading Adrian, who is not a resident. This is from the Mainline Branch of the NAACP. And Adrian is the Vice President of the Mainline Branch of the NAACP, which is one of the nation's oldest and most historic civil rights groups. She says that Haverford School District is one of six districts in the jurisdiction of the Mainline NAACP. And it's come to their attention that there may be some pushback against basis and equity policies in the district. So she wanted to address the board about this. She says that it's hard to learn about racism, especially in a majority-white community where there is a lot of pushback against any sort of discussion about race in general. And that racial equity doesn't mean that one group is going to get less of something. It's just a rebalancing of resources and being aware of when and how policies benefit one group over another and take care. And one of the goals of the NAACP is to fix that. The NAACP believes that kids in the district deserve to learn about everyone's experiences and stories. Children in Haverford Township School District deserve to know about America's full history and experiences. And this is important, and knowing these stories can benefit all of us. The NAACP's Education Committee held a forum last week that highlighted the progress of over five other school districts in the jurisdiction and their diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. It was helpful for all of the participants to hear what the other districts are doing because they are so similarly demographically and geographically. Sharing our efforts publicly builds trust in our communities as we move forward towards equity and inclusion for everybody. And there's a link to the forum online. If the school district would like to record a presentation or be involved with the Mainline Branch of the NAACP, they're happy to work with you too. And I think you have in the past.
Thank you. The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. And I just want to reiterate that this board and this administration are committed to ensuring that every child feels welcome and is ready to learn in our schools. Next item on our agenda. Board Liaison Report. And I believe the only one we have this evening is policy. Is that correct?
There was a policy meeting, and we have several of the policies that we discussed on the agenda tonight. So I will, if it's okay, I'm just going to wait until after we go through the policies. And then if there is anything that we need to report out beyond that, then I certainly will. But I believe that we have several first readings tonight on the policies.
Thanks, Antoinette. Next item is superintendent remarks. Dr. Ruscie.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. A few things this evening. Before I get started, though, I do want to recognize the efforts of folks in our Facilities Department, our Technology Department, Anna Deacon in Communications. The room that we're sitting in tonight, the technology that is at work this evening, enabling people to be here with us, Zoom in if they need to Zoom in, setting up another room for an overflow room, was no small feat. It looks great when you come in here. It's, you know, comfortable. And I just don't want to lose sight of the fact to say thank you to the people who have made this happen because there's a lot behind the scenes. So Blue, Rob, Anna, Sarah, and Bob, please let our facilities staff know that we really appreciate the number of times they rearranged and moved chairs and tables and got all of the technology set up. We are looking at an exciting week coming up, beginning with tomorrow. Tomorrow being the date of the prom for the students at the high school. Kudos to the Haverford Reserve. They've been terrific for us to work with. Their collaboration on the event and making this a special event, as it should be for our students, really is greatly appreciated by the district. In addition to the Haverford Reserve over at the Krec, we want to thank all of the BLAST parents for setting up those decorations, again, making it such a special event. It's all about the kids. At the end of the day, it's all about the kids. And those folks have done a great job stepping up and making sure that our children can have the experiences that are so important to their senior year, their high school experience. Next week is graduation for us, and I want, you know, just a few public service announcements. Again, sometimes when you hear the number, there will be over 2,500 people over at Haverford High School next Thursday. So please, we are encouraging. We are asking if families can carpool, please carpool. Let's try to avoid multiple cars for the same family, you know, traveling to the high school, looking for parking that evening. Graduation will be livestreamed. So there will be, like, let your families, extended families, friends, neighbors know that graduation is going to be livestreamed. The gates will open at 4:00 in the afternoon. They will not be open earlier, but at 4:00 they will open with our goal of a prompt start to graduation at 5:00. We are very cognizant of the warm week that has already been predicted and, you know, remaining aware that our parents, guardians, family members will already be in the bleachers 45 minutes to an hour before we even begin. So we're writing, I have like maybe a minute and a half, two minutes, limiting the remarks so that we can, again, focus on the kids. At 3:30 in the afternoon, if we have to make a decision that is weather-related, that's the time that we will make the decision. We will not push the decision late and then have people, you know, on their way or will, you know, try to give them enough time that if alternate plans need to be made. If graduation needs to be moved indoors, it will be indoors for students and then livestream. And that's why we're making that decision early enough so that families can make the arrangements that they want to make for that. In the spirit of thank yous, I want to, you know, thank the staff at the high school. I want to thank the students who really have worked so hard this year to do everything they can to make the best of the year. And they've looked at new and different ways for creating those experiences that are important to them. And they deserve a lot of credit for what they've been able to pull off this year as students at the high school. So with that, I will say thank you and conclude my remarks.
Thanks, Dr. Ruscie. The next item on our agenda is Wellness Update.
Nicole Battistelli has been chairing that group.
Good evening, everyone.
And will do the yearly update for us.
Good evening, Dr. Ruscie, Mr. Feinberg, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Lean in.
Lean in. Oh, this is going to be comfortable. Okay. Members of the board, community members and colleagues. Tonight, I'm presenting the annual update on the school district's wellness policy. And I, oop, the clicker. I have the clicker. So just for some background, the school wellness policy, it was actually recently updated in November. It was developed roughly four years ago, and it involves the development of a wellness committee. That committee includes administrators, faculty members, students, parents, community members, and a school board member. And the purpose of the policy is to promote physical activity wellness and the implementation of the USDA School Lunch Program and guidelines for classroom celebrations and fundraisers. Communication about the activities go out through the schools, through Haverford Happenings, and through our various social media accounts. Oops, I went too far. Oh, my goodness. Okay. This year, some of the topics we covered are appearing on the slide there. We talked about snacks sold at lunchtime. Some of the activities, Healthy Fords Outdoors was promoted through the Haverford Happenings. We did a review of the policy using a policy review tool provided by PDE. And there were food service updates at each meeting. This year, the wellness committee met via Zoom. We obviously shifted to Zoom meetings last year and continued with Zoom meetings throughout this school year. Thank you. The next three slides outline some of the activities that have been happening at each level. As you can see, we're still able to promote wellness this year. Some things may have looked a little different because of COVID, but we still had a lot of activities going on. And what you'll notice over the next three slides is brain breaks continue to be popular at all three of our levels. Oops. The elementary school, you know, morning meetings, birthday shout-outs, brain breaks, mindfulness activities. And then the middle school, you can keep it there. That's fine. At the middle school, something that's really great that kind of came out of us adding Zoom was that they could have school-wide morning meetings. So the whole school participates in a morning meeting, and students very much love it. It promotes a sense of community and belonging. And it's just very popular at the middle school right now. I hear a lot about it. We also were able to add a 43-minute wellness period. So there's art therapy, music therapy, you know, meditation, brain breaks that our students are participating in. So that was really great for our students this year. And at the high school, again, brain breaks every level. Our students really love brain breaks, as do we. We had Minding Your Mind virtual assemblies for every grade level. Our seniors still had activities to participate in to celebrate their senior year, such as the senior sunrise. There's a picture you'll see in a moment of the senior sunrise. We continued with our clubs and added even new clubs. As some of you may have heard from our esports club at one of our more recent board meetings. And our athletics team still participated. We had Unified Bocce, track and field. Our Best Buddies program had a tennis clinic with a boys' tennis team. And all of our sports were able to field teams this year. And our students really liked the virtual office hours we were able to offer this school year due to the setup with Zoom. So these are some pictures of some activities. The senior sunrise, it's a little difficult to see with the lighting here, but what you can't see is a bunch of seniors outside in front of the sunrise. That's a little difficult to see. There's a picture of our Best Buddies Walk. We usually participate in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, but that was not going to happen this year. But we still maintain having the walk and some other activities. You can see pictures of our students enjoying physical activity. And some updates from food services. Starting next school year, we will have the Discovery Kitchen through Chartwells, which is a nutrition education program, but also cooking demonstrations. So students will get to learn about the food that they're eating. And there's a theme every month, and the children will watch a cooking demonstration and will learn about the nutrition in the meals that they're eating. And some of the themes for next year are listed on the slide. They also have a Mood Boost program, which teaches children the connection between the food they eat and how they feel, not just physical health, but mental wellness. And sometime hopefully between August and September and the start of the school year, they will launch the Nutrislice app/website, which will show students and parents pictures of the school lunches that are being offered, as well as the nutrition information that goes along with those meals. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my wellness update. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Questions from the board?
I just have a comment.
Sure.
It's nice to hear that Chartwells is being a partner in our wellness program. Some people may not know that they are a new food service manager that was engaged this year. And a strength of their proposal was their interest in the kind of learning activities and working with the kids on understanding nutrition and how food connects to a healthy lifestyle. And having some of those services, like the menus and the nutritional information, was something that we were interested in that they could bring to the district that we hadn't already been offering. So I just wanted to say that that's great, that that kind of participation is happening.
No, sorry. Questions from the board?
I want to thank everyone for... Can you hear me? I want to thank the district for all their work in making this tech-friendly. I mean, wellness is one of the things that needs to be in person, right? And, you know, everything that's been happening has not been promoting wellness generally throughout this pandemic. And I don't mean what the school district has done, just the way our lives have been because of the pandemic. So thank you for finding ways to make this work throughout COVID.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good report. I just want to mention it's not a public, open forum. Our meetings are structured, and I apologize. But this is the way that we operate. Next item on the agenda is an overview of the final budget for 2021-22. Mr. Regal?
Tonight, we'll be approving the final budget. We've been working on it for nine months since around October, early October. And we had a preliminary budget in January and then proposed final budget in April. And now we're finalizing things and we're adopting the budget so that we can incorporate it into our financials for the 21-22 fiscal year. The Act One Index, a lot of this I've said at other presentations, but the Act One Index immediately following a county-wide reassessment is the Act One Index from the prior year. In 2021, the index was 2.6%. So we were not eligible for any Act One exceptions. So 2.6% was the ceiling. That was the maximum millage increase that we could have in the 21-22 budget. So PSCRs, which is our contribution, employer contribution into the retirement plan, is So every dollar of salary we pay out, we also pay 34, 35 cents toward that pension. We do get half of that back in the form of a subsidy from the state of Pennsylvania. But so it's really half of that. When we did the reassessment, the total assessment pretty much doubled. And the, of course, the millage was kind of cut in half, so it all worked out. But when they did the reassessment, the certified assessment was closer to 100% of fair market value, and the number was 6,360, 6,360,012,575. That was in January 1st, and that's what the townships use for their budgets. But there probably has been a little bit of growth since then. Debt service has been added to the budget for Phase Two of the high school project, which is the renovation to the fitness area and the music wing and some parking and some other areas. So debt service will be in place. Now for, obviously, for Linwood would be all funded. Phase One of the high school renovation is all funded, and now Phase Two will be funded. There's $625,000 in capitalized interest in this budget. Basically, capitalized interest is very similar to if you borrowed, had a mortgage and you borrowed extra money to pay for the closing costs. It kind of finances some of the borrowing in order to spread it across more years and and makes it smoother transition into the budget instead of all hitting it in one year. We've cut, since January, we've cut $2,998,000 out of the budget through various different reductions, salaries, benefits, supplies, different areas, debt service, in order to get the budget down to the point where our estimated revenues would be balancing with our expenditures. The state property tax reduction allocation, everyone's heard of the homestead property rebate. Well, basically, the state provides us with an allocation of 2,000,000, let's see, 2,103,000, and there's 12,070 approved homestead properties. So if you divide that into the 2.1 million, you come up with $174 reduction in your taxes. That gets converted into an assessment, and then that assessment gets removed, reduced from everybody's assessed value on their property, and that's how your reduction happens. There's new positions. These have been in pretty much the whole way. Five new teaching positions, one psychologist, one elementary assistant principal, a .5 increase to our registrar position, and student tech positions to help support our technology department. This is a one-page financing of the budget. The revenue budget on the top, 131 million. Expenditure, 134,548,275. It leaves a shortfall of 3,497,000. A tax increase at 2.6% brings in 2,627,532, and that leaves a shortfall of 870,118. And that's going to come out of our savings account, our use of fund balance. We're kind of banking on the fact that we'll find savings somewhere along the line and and we'll balance our budget and and be able to recoup that 870,000 use of fund balance. The increase in taxes, 2.6%. The average increase for the taxpayer is $155. This is a little harder to see on the screen, but this is our revenue budget. I think the biggest part of the revenue budget is the fact that Havreford, 80.51% of our sources of revenue is local. You have $131 million worth of revenue, and 101 million of it is coming from real estate. And 105 of the 131 is coming from local. We're getting 23,792,000 from the state of Pennsylvania from subsidies, and the federal government is giving us 1,748,000. So we do, we have a low aid ratio. Our wealth is such that our subsidies are a lot less than some other districts. And that's why 81% of our revenue comes from the local. Here again, it's not that easy to see, but this is our expenditure compared to, it's a budget-to-budget expenditure comparison. 2021 is in the one column, 21-22 budget is in the other column, and the increase or decrease in line items is in the second from the end, and the percent increase or decreases on the right. If you look at the increase or decrease, you can see that the makeup of the increase in the budget, 1.1 million dollars comes from increase in salaries, 450,000 comes from increase in benefits, 600,000 comes from IU services and contracted services. A lot of things entail in professional services. That includes legal service, that includes our subcontract. There's a lot of different contracts under that area. 195,000 purchased services, which includes tuition, special ed tuition, charter school tuition was a large increase over the pandemic period. Supplies are down. Equipment is up, 118,000, and debt service is at 1,181,000. So the, putting the debt service in place for $62 million worth of projects, including the high school renovation, Linwood, and climate control at Chatham Park and Cooper Town, the impact of all that is seen in the debt service increases that we're having. So the total increase of the budget-to-budget from last year is 3,476,457, and that's a 2.65% increase in our expenditures from the prior year. This is a, this is a 10-year average of our increase. As you can see, our 10-year average of our increases in taxes is 2.85%. If you compare that to the enrollment increases over that same period, you can see it averages out about 2.05% increase in our enrollment. So it's not that far ahead of what is needed to, you know, because of the fact that we also had increases in our enrollment. That's, that's my presentation. Hopefully, the board will adopt the final budget, and we can move forward with the 21-22 year.
Thanks, Bob. Questions or comments from the board? Laura?
Can you hear me? Okay. The charter school tuition, it looks like, if I'm reading this right, the 640,000 compared to last year of 300,000. We had talked, I believe, at a previous board meeting about reaching out to those students and seeing, I believe they were cyber charter students primarily. Is that correct? So where are we with that? Do we have any updates on that?
Yes, we continue to reach out to the families from whom we have not heard. We, last week, we had about nine students confirmed returned, and we were still waiting to hear back from about 20. So we anticipate that as people get more information about what's coming in the coming months, that we'll hear back from some more families. But we continue that outreach.
Okay, great, thanks. And then my other question about the Essar money, which we've talked about at a previous meeting as well, that does not get factored into this, as well as the Essar expenditures, is that correct? Because we don't know exactly.
The Essar funds are not part of this budget.
Okay.
Nor, because we're still working on the expenditure plan for that.
Okay.
Some of that might come out of what's budgeted here, which would be a savings sum of it. If it's new expenditures, would be added to this. Normally, what you do with like a federal program that's not.
It's not in here now, though, Bob. I think that was the question. It's not in here now.
It's not in there, but at some point, you would do an amendment to the budget, probably in October, and you'd put the 1.3 allocation on the revenue side and the expenditure side. So it would kind of be a wash in a sense because the same money comes in as goes out.
Great.
Other questions from the board?
Thank you.
So I am on the liaison committee and just wanted to reiterate that for the, I mean, for the finance liaisons and reiterate the amount of time that this budget has developed over the year. And that I appreciate all the efforts to bring that gap down, to narrow the expenditure so we were closer to being on budget. The district is in good financial condition, and I think this budget does a good and appropriately conservative job of looking out to next year. There's some uncertainties. There's a lot of mandates and obligations that the school district needs to manage and include in the budget. And I think for a budget of 100 and over $30 million, the board and the administration have a lot of appreciation as that 80% of our budget is funded locally. We appreciate that our district has the community's support and ability to fund our schools at a high quality. And we know we are fortunate in that regard, and we don't take it for granted. It's one of the reasons that we continue to advocate as a, as a board and a district and individually as board members for more fair and equitable state funding and federal sources that would support our special education and other programs in our schools and kind of level the playing field for all students in our region to have opportunities to go to schools with robust programs, high academics, quality buildings, and the technology and programs they need to learn. I think that our budget does a good job of delivering those things for Havreford Township and look forward to a day when our state and federal government support all of our kids in public schools to that level.
Thanks, Bridgette. Other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm curious at a future meeting if we could hear how our budget has grown in relationship to our enrollment. I'm sure you don't have that handy, but it would be kind of nice to know, and I think interesting for the public to see. Our budget's only gotten bigger as our enrollment's gotten bigger, and those two are tied together. The reason I think our enrollment's gotten bigger and therefore we've needed more money is because it's a high-quality school district that is attractive to people from around the region, not just within Havreford Township. But we're seeing an influx of people from around the region coming to this area for what? Good quality of life and excellent education.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I had a question about Peasars. Are we getting to the ceiling? Are we, I know there's, like, we're paying almost 35% right now of payroll into that system. I know this is all, the state is telling us what we are required to pay. Are we going to be paying less? I know it was zero at one point in time.
We're leveling off.
Okay.
Been a long, steep climb. And I'd just like to say, both for Havreford and for all 500 districts statewide, there are mandated expenses that we have no control over. Pension, pension increases have nothing to do with this board. We have no latitude. They're established by the state's pension board. Special ed costs, we operate under federal laws that require us to address any needs that our students have. The state doesn't do much in terms of funding special education. And third is the charter school expenses. Likewise, that's based on formulas. So we have no real latitude in terms of those three budget lines. And generally, for most school districts, that's the lion's share of increases. I want to thank Bob and the business office and the finance liaisons for their good work with this budget. This is, I guess, the fourth or fifth time that we've presented the budget in process at a public meeting over the last year, and tonight, we're going to put it to bed.
Larry, speaking of Peasars, the community may know that in the Inquirer recently have been some pretty eye-opening and shocking articles exposing some potential issues with regards to the Peasars management.
Yeah, it's absolutely true.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Bob.
And your final, Bob.
Nicely done. Would you like to print this one up and take it home and put it on your refrigerator?
You could frame it.
That might be the first time there was applause for a budget.
Bob, you can finally empty your pencil sharpener.
Thank you.
That was cute.
Next up, first reading of Policy 626, Federal Fiscal Compliance. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Maybe you don't want me to get close to the microphone for policy work, but I'm going to anyway. Tonight, we are presenting two relatively routine policies, I believe. And we will begin with Policy 626, Federal Fiscal Compliance. And even though I noted in Mr. Regal's presentation that our federal funding is, I think you said, less than $2 million, right, out of our 130 million budget, we have a series of requirements that are imposed upon us and mainly upon the business office, and this policy really captures those requirements. So 626, Federal Fiscal Compliance, technically, it's being presented as a new policy because we don't have a 626 currently. However, the business office and the district at large has already been complying with the requirements that are contained in 626 and the, and the attachments that go along with 626. So it's a new policy, but in some sense, it's really not new. We've been using these regulations, and Mr. Regal, you'll jump in and correct me if I get any of this wrong. But we have been using these provisions and requirements for federal funds for probably a decade or more. However, the federal government wants to see this policy and the attachments in a formal board-adopted policy, and that's what we're trying to accomplish in the next couple of meetings. So we're presenting 626 before you, which contains formal technical requirements, again, as imposed by the federal government, on receipt and use of. as imposed by the federal government, on receipt and use of federal funds. There's really no latitude. So in that sense, this policy presentation and the work that, that we've done leading up to it is a little bit different than the other policy work that we do, because there are requirements that we need to utilize anytime we receive, manage, and utilize federal funds, even if they're not very large. So the, the policy itself provides that the board shall ensure that federal funds are received and administered in accordance with the federal requirements. The policy designates the business manager as the district contact for all federal programs and funding. However, that's going to be done in collaboration with the federal programs coordinator at the district, and in our district, that's Sarah Christiansen. So there's a good bit of work that's done in, in that office with respect to these requirements. It requires that we have sound and compliant internal controls and federal grant management standards. Where are they? They are contained in this ream of paper that we did not burden you with, because, again, they are the, if you will, non-negotiable, technical, detailed requirements covering topics from travel reimbursement to procurement to allowability of costs and cash management procedures in connection with the receipt and management of federal funds. So essentially, this makes up the manual, if you will, that the business office and the federal programs office utilizes to make sure that we continue to comply with federal law. So again, in some respects, the adoption of 626 is something of a formality, if you will. And I don't mean to minimize it, it's just that the, the policy is relatively straightforward, and again, the requirement, the detailed requirements are non-negotiable. That's what we have before you this evening as 626. Be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have from the, the document itself. It has been preliminarily reviewed by the policy liaisons and, and of course, the business office and others in the district who utilize these requirements.
Questions or comments from the board?
Comment on, as, as we said earlier, the policy liaisons did meet on this. That includes myself, Mr. Sinto, Ms. Wedeman, and Ms. Larson. And we, we discussed this policy, and I think as anyone who has thoroughly enjoyed all of our policy discussions in the past, it's, it's probably obvious that we like to take out our red pen whenever we look at any draft policy, whether that's coming from PSBA or from council or, or wherever it may be. And so as Mr. Parker said, we did not take the red pen to this, and it's for the very obvious reasons that this is mandated. And so it is, it is a formality for this one. So while we reviewed it, we did discuss it, because I don't think we can help ourselves from discussing it. But we didn't actually change anything here as, as Mr. Parker laid out the reasons why.
Thanks, Antoinette. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, moving right along.
Okay, and the second policy that we're presenting this evening is Policy 800.1, Electronic Signatures and Records. This is a new policy, and it was generated by the Pennsylvania School Board Association, primarily, I think, because the use of electronic signatures and records is accelerating. Obviously, the last 15 months has contributed to that, but even before the pandemic, the practice of utilizing and accepting electronic signatures and records had been occurring at a greater rate. So this is a PSBA-generated new policy that has been recommended for school districts across the state, recently recommended to be reviewed and, and adopted, at least in some form. Again, there's not a lot of leeway in that it's relatively straightforward, relatively routine. The policy, as it's before you this evening, has been reviewed by the district solicitors' office, the Whistler firm, and as we've said, the policy liaisons have preliminarily looked at it before we have, we're presenting it to the full board tonight and to the public. The policy, in essence, supports and authorizes certain current practices that we utilize. I know that in, in my corner of the district, I frequently use electronic signatures with state-related documentation for certification and the like. So this will provide a, a basis for the district to operate with electronic signatures and records in a formal sense, a policy basis. We are expecting expansion of the use of electronic records and signatures, obviously. I, I think this world is not going back from that. It permits what has become in common practice, and the policy specifically allows for the use and of and acceptance of electronic records and signatures, establishes certain guidelines, unless a manual signature is required by law, regulations, or at the direction of the superintendent or designate. So there were many instances where practice will allow it, and if a manual signature's not required, then we will utilize this authority to accept those. The policy also speaks to the expanding use of electronic records. And again, frequently now, we're receiving records, for instance, at least, again, in my corner of the world, and my colleagues could cite other examples in their corners of the district, but in, certainly in the HR department, we're receiving electronic records of all sorts all the time, including clearances and the like. That's been a practice for years, so this policy now really catches up with, with practice and then provides the sound policy basis for us to do that. So if there are comments from the liaisons or other board members?
I, I have one, I just, for the public's benefit, and this was something that wasn't clear to me in my first read of this policy, is that it applies not just to the district's business operations and internal things, but as a parent in the district who has signed umpteen forms over the years, I look forward to a time where we might have this ability to submit permission forms and, and health, you know, like respond to health and safety and signing up for sports and activities and all of that. So I think we, in the community, will see some benefits from this policy as well.
Yeah, I'll jump in as well, and we did take the red pen to this. It was minimal, but it was to ensure that the policy read exactly how Bridgette just laid out, the way that we are reading it, which is that it doesn't just apply to district-to-district, you know, internal communications or otherwise district, you know, business communications, but in fact, I do think this is going to be welcome to parents who, who maybe are all, are already signing things, so this is, could just be, again, a codification of a practice, but now with some, some teeth behind it. But certainly, you know, I think that we, the district is looking into those sort of electronic signature, different programs that, that can be more formal, but I certainly know that when the pandemic started and I realized I didn't have a printer, that was something that was very interesting, just getting, just getting forms signed over. And so this, this hopefully will, will help with things like that, but again, minimal changes to the PSBA sample, which, which was recommended to us by PSBA, and mainly just to make sure that it reads so that it can be used by the community. So I, I do think this is an important policy to adopt so that we can sort of enter the 21st century here, 2021 electronic signatures.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Do any of our student handbooks address electronic signatures? Is that, if not, is that an update we need to consider in light of the policy and an increase of electronic signatures?
That's probably a good point. I, I don't know exactly what the student handbooks provide, but that would be worth looking into.
And, and maybe it could even just refer to the policy. You know, a lot of times with these things, they're constantly changing, and I think this would be something that could potentially change again, just depending on if, if there is software that we got or something like that. So to the extent that there is a, a manual signature provision within the student handbooks, I think that we should consider maybe just instead of having it be specific in the handbook, refer to, to the policy and to, to the board policies as a whole.
Also a good point, and you, you used the magic word "software," and I know that Mr. Anderson, Rob Anderson's in the back there, and we've, we've been discussing this over time, not just myself, but others in, in the administration, and so this is an area of interest for, for Rob Anderson and who will be instrumental in finding the appropriate software to allow the expansion of the use of electronic signatures.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, we'll, we will look forward to the second reading of these exciting policies.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. I enjoyed this.
The next item on our agenda is the school calendar for, wait for this now, ready? 2022 dash 23, that's, I think that's the first time we use the 2023 term, which is kind of.
Back to me. Okay. So this is the school calendar, the first reading of the 2022, 2023 school calendar. When we develop the school calendar, there's a lot of givens. You know, there's not a lot of wiggle room and not a whole lot of creativity that goes into a school calendar. We know the holidays, we know spring break and winter break, we'd like to end the school year for students on a Friday so that they're not coming back to school for a day or two. So we made our best effort to have all of that happen in this calendar. We start after Labor Day. We have 184 student days and 192 teachers' days, and again, not a whole lot of creativity in this calendar. Most of it is set based on holidays, and, but we did meet the school days and the requirements for the teacher contract in this calendar.
And Nicole, the la, the first day of school for students and the last day of school for students is usually the number one question people have when they first see this.
September 6, 2022, and June 16, 2023, for the first and last day.
One observation is about spring break and people who might be thinking about, oh, we get to travel and do things again. This calendar does not have what might be called that wraparound Easter Monday in it. Can you speak a little to the constraints that made that not be on part of spring break this time?
Sure, and it, it's actually not part of spring break next year either, so there's some years where it works and some years where it does not work, and this is a year where it does not work. If we add it that day, students would be ending school on a Monday. There was no wiggle room. We had to take a student and teacher day, and, you know, you add a teacher day but not a student day, you know, the numbers are not equaling what they need to equal. So this is, that is why that Monday is not here. That's consistent with next year's calendar, but, you know, that may not be the case the following school year, depending on when holidays fall.
And just one other question. I know this year, with the access to virtual learning, there was a broad discussion of like, oh, no, it's the end of snow days, and I, I loved that our district had the snow days. I would wonder if in the planning for the 184 days, what the district's kind of thinking is about building in that cushion above the 180 mandated days for inclement weather in how we might continue to use technology for virtual days? Has there been any thinking around, around that regarding the calendar?
We will submit to, to have certain days, you know, approved, the flexible plan, but there's no guarantee that that submission will be approved, and there will be a limit, Jen, is it four days? So I'm glad, actually, that you asked this question, Ms. Wedeman, because it's, it's probably important that we communicate to people. We don't have the unilateral authority to choose any day next year and say, that's a virtual learning day and it's going to count. We will have to get approval for those, for those days. There may be some flexibility there if Pennsylvania Department of Ed continues to look at COVID and the impact that COVID may have on the, the next school year, but we have been told not to assume that we can choose days in our calendar and identify them as virtual learning days and have them count. So we're continuing to build our calendar as we have been in building that.
Thank you.
I, I have a question, and it's about September 2. I'm just surprised that that's not filled in with a color.
So that is before the school year starts? So the blue represents teacher in-service days, and then for employees who start when the school year starts, that's starting, you know, September 6, so that is not a holiday, but it's also not a teacher in-service day. So there are no teachers in the building that day, regular staff that work, you know, 12 months are, are in the office that day, but it's not, since it's prior to the start of the school year, it's really not, you know, being highlighted as a holiday or not a holiday, it's just not an in-service day.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Is there some way to designate on the calendar when the first day of school is? Like maybe just putting a circle around it or adding another code?
So we, we do, and I don't know if you just can't see it because of the way it's projected or, there's usually a darker highlight around, like a square around it.
Okay.
Yeah, and so when this is published, that's what, you know, it'll be, have a square around it.
And we're not asked, we're not seeking your approval this evening. I was bringing this forward for a first reading this evening.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing this when it comes back. Next item on our agenda is for information purposes only, the secretary to submit for insertion into the minutes, proof of publication as it relates to the legal notice of the intent to approve the 2021, 2022 final budget. There's no motion on this.
Sorry. But some of you want.
But I, I'm glad you found it to be moving, so. Next item, I'll accept a motion to approve disbursements from the general fund totaling
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect, KCBA and Associates, Inc., and owner's representative, CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize change orders totaling $67,692.14 as listed.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Can we, since Ken wasn't here, can anyone speak to some of these change orders or just?
I think with the Linwood project, you know, some of them are related to the expand, the expansion that was added late in the project, but, you know, if you read through at this point in, in that project, you know, we're, we're probably looking at punch list items and things that may have been overlooked previously, and having gone through several of these construction projects over the last 20 years, this is pretty normal stuff. I guess Ken is scheduled.
I, I do have Ken's notes here, if there, if there is a particular one that you were, that you were curious, curious about, I can try to.
No, that's okay. Usually, we get the update from him before the change orders, so that's all that I was looking for.
Looking at the descriptions in the documentation we received, just click.
Looking at the descriptions in the documentation we received, it looks like they're finishing touches, you know, final things to put the building together.
And right, just for the public's information, the board did get kind of an outline and a description and Ken's assessment that the change orders are fair and reasonable for each of the items listed.
Yeah, in the case of Linwood, they're just trying to clean things up and get it ready because obviously in the middle of June, we have to, well, furniture's being moved in now. Eighty percent of the furniture's already in the building. We have to get that completed and cleaned up so that taking all the furniture from old Linwood, either putting it in storage or it's going to be part of the demolition or could move, we're moving some of that into the new building. Not really furniture, but other only about getting everything done in the building so that we can set everything up.
Thanks, Bob. Any other questions or comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda. I'll accept a motion to approve the 2021-2022 final budget and corresponding budget resolution. The final budget for the fiscal year 2021-2022 totals $135,348,275. This amount includes $800,000 in budgetary reserve. The proposed millage rate is 17.1811, an increase of .4353 mills or 2.6% over the 2020-2021 millage rate of 16.7458 mills. The proposed expenditures are $3,476,457 more than the 2020-2021 budget for an increase of 2.652%. Moved in second. Any discussion?
Bob, remind me again, auditor has a copy of this as well, correct? Or where do they come into this process? I know we've seen them before, but they're not here tonight.
Auditor? The auditor comes in and they, like 2021, they'll audit in July and August and September, and they will get, they'll compare 2021 end result to budget. So we also look at that internally, just say, what can we do better to, you know, budget's an estimate or a projection, so we try to get it to be more closer to after. So we look at trends and things like that. But then the auditors are not going to look at this budget state level. We have to send state budget, and we have to, for instance, we have to see that we're within the 2.6% on the village. So they'll look at all that information, but the auditors won't look at it until 21-22 is done.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda. I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution implementing the homestead/farmstead exclusion for 2021-2022 pursuant to Section 342 of Act 1 of Special Session 2006. Moved in second. Any discussion? I just want to mention that this Act 1 of Special Session 2006, that's where the gambling money was supposed to reduce our taxes. And that's where this homestead/farmstead exclusion was created. So thanks to the good folks who have been gambling over the past year. Each of our registered homestead/farmstead properties will get, what was it, $174 credit on their taxes?
And 31 cents.
And 31 cents. Don't spend it all in one place. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to authorize special counsel for tax assessment appeals to resolve the following assessment appeals pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County as listed. Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to appoint Kathleen Schwartz as school board treasurer to serve a one-year term effective July 1, 2021. So moved? Moved in second. Any discussion?
I think I ask this every year. Could somebody just speak to the role of the board treasurer? And that would help.
The board treasurer is a signer on checks also. Depends on the school district, what they give. It might include signing agreements for bank documents.
Kathy predominantly serves as the third signature on the checks.
So it just helps us facilitate doing business.
Our signatures have a board president, board secretary, and treasurer usually, so.
It's high-pitched.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate you doing this and doing it again. Next item on our agenda. Accept a motion to accept the resignations as listed.
Second.
In second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept the appointments as listed.
Move. Second.
In second. Any discussion? Just like to point out that one of the appointments that we're approving is the new principal for the Chesnut Walt School, Joseph Denalsbeck. Joseph, congratulations. Welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you.
And it's kind of nice that for all of our little learners there at Chesnut Walt, that they can keep saying, Mr. D is my principal.
Joe Joel.
Yeah, JD, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Please, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Mr. Denalsbeck comes to us with experience as a principal at all three levels in an education system at both elementary, middle school, and the high school level. In speaking with his references, former supervisors who have worked with him, I'll just share with you some of the things that they very willingly shared with me. They talked about Joe's dedication to his work, in particular, the children. The children are always first. He's one of the hardest-working principals that I have ever worked with, and that's from one of your superintendents, Joe. We, as a team, were impressed with his sincere belief that community is at the heart of the school experience. That came across loud and clear in all of the four, five, how many rounds? We have several rounds of interviews here to our process. So to take over the helm at a school that has been recognized at both the state and national level for its work around character, we warmly welcome you into that family at Chesnut Walt and our larger community here. Thanks for joining us, Jeff. Typically, we'd shake your hand now, but we'll just surprise you.
Next item, I'll accept a motion to approve the leave requests as listed.
Move. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the student educational excursions as listed.
Moved.
In second. Any discussion?
How did we do? At the track and field. Does anybody know how we did? Congratulations to everyone.
Thanks, Erica.
And Erica, are you on that team? Thanks for staying around, Erica.
So we had a move in a second. Did we vote?
Aye.
Don't think so.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Next, we have this minor detail. I'll accept a motion to approve the list of graduates in the class of 2021 on condition that students continue at a satisfactory level of performance for the remainder of the 2020-2021 school year. No senioritis.
Five more days, five more days. You can do it.
Move.
I proudly move this one.
You have to abstain.
You have to.
Oh, no.
On your behalf, I move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
How many are there total?
I know there are over 460 students in the class. When you're on this list, it's not.
We'll set some records for a couple of years now in the large graduating classes.
They're coming.
They're coming.
Yep.
That's why we're building classrooms.
And I'm seeing a lot of honors society or honors recognition designations next to these names, so that's exciting as well.
But it is.
Another very accomplished class. Yeah, that's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Erica, you can graduate.
I'm going to let him go. I'm going to let him go.
Motion carries. We're looking forward to graduation, and we'll do whatever we can to appease the weather gods. Next item on our agenda is board reports. Antoinette?
I just want to say congratulations to all of the graduates. I'm very excited to attend for the first time. And I approve of whatever we need to do to have the weather be appropriate. But you know, as the school year comes to a close, I do also just want to say that we've had a lot of thanks to our teachers and our staff. And that also rings true. But I just want to say thank you to all of our students this year for being so resilient and for really just being models for everyone in our community at how to respectfully handle something that none of us have handled. And every time I meet with our students, every time I meet someone new at every level, I am constantly amazed at how well-spoken they are and how much they care about our community. And so, and positive throughout the whole pandemic. And so, you know, we're back in the Oakmont Building and we're excited to be here. But our students have been going in and out of buildings for the last year. And so I just want to say thank you and congratulations to all of our students for making it through this year, especially to our students who are graduating.
Thanks, Antoinette. Ari?
We approved a promotion from the offensive coordinator and middle school teacher Luke Dougherty to the new varsity head football coach. Thank you, Coach Gal, for all your years. Good luck to you, Mr. Coach Dougherty. The most important thing I think any of us can do to get ready for next year and to see the most normal school year we could possibly have is to get vaccinated. That seems to be the trick. It's going really well. I think we can probably still do better, and this is obviously a message for parents who have kids 12 and up as of right now. Other than that, one last note. The middle school just finished their Help Hope Live Olympics, so I want to thank the middle school students, teachers, and faculty for a successful Help Hope Live charitable campaign.
Thanks, Ari. Dave?
Thanks. Yeah, so on this last Wednesday, I along with Dr. Crispin and precious Susan was in here this evening, but we attended the time capsule opening and new time capsule placement at Linwood, which was very exciting. We got to see what was in the last one. Not everything survived, not very few things survived actually, but it was still there. It's interesting to see they had some amazing facts up about the old school. I believe it was built in 1954. Is that right, Dr. Rucci? 1950, okay. What made me with that was the price tag at the time, $1 million. Newest one is 20 times something, something for that. But it was, it's been a big thanks to everybody who participated in that, including some of our seniors who sang at our event to ring in the new building. And like I said, I wish Miss Minjoo was here. She's a walking encyclopedia of that building and of that school. And I'm sure she'll listen and say about that next time we meet. But great event. Thank you very much. And like Antoinette, I'm looking very much forward to our first in-person graduation. And welcome back to all of you as well who came this evening. Good to see everybody.
Thanks, Dave. Kristen?
I just want to echo what Antoinette said in terms of thanking our students for, you know, getting themselves, getting us through this year and for all of their resilience throughout it all, throughout the uncertainty as we, the adults, tried to figure out what was best. And, you know, thank you to our teachers and staff, and good luck as you wrap up the end of this school year. Also looking forward to graduation. It was kind of weird not to be able to celebrate our graduates last year. So it'll be good to be out there again. And thank you for all the work that went into setting up this room, to allowing the public to come back. Thank you to all of you for your engagement and coming out and for wearing your masks.
Thanks, Kristen. Laura?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Dave said. It was such a pleasure to be at the ceremony. My daughter will be going to Linwood next year, so it was really fun to be there. And it was like the first fun school board event I've been able to attend. Everything that I've, you know, I've only been on.
You mean, these other meetings haven't been fun? Is that what you're implying?
I thought you loved Zoom.
Also, discussions are scisselating.
It's been nothing but a Zoom party. But no, it was such a pleasure to be out in the community and doing such a fun event and for my own homeschool. So that was, it was wonderful. I am sad that Sue couldn't be here tonight to talk a little more about it since she was such an important part of the history of Linwood. But it was really great. And just looking back at some of the historical documents and everything that were blown up on the side of the building, it was just wild to see some of that information, like enrollment numbers and the cost of the building. And I think that included purchasing the land, too. So it was the purchase of the land and building the building, right?
The thinking land, by the way, at the time.
Right? So yeah, that was, it was just wild.
I think the picture I saw showed a board of all men and a superintendent who's also there.
Right, right. So yeah, and it was also just kind of exciting to think like they're taking our photo and like, you know, the next time they open the time capsule, it's going to be us. So that was kind of neat. Anyway, other than that, I did the, my first legislative breakfast. I kind of did like that it was on Zoom because I wouldn't have been able to attend in person. But it was really great to hear from so many of our legislators about their priorities and their support for public education. And I'm really looking forward to graduation. Like Antoinette said, it'll be, many of us are first graduations, so.
Great, thanks, Laura. Sal?
Now, just congratulations to our graduates on what has been an amazing and memorable and crazy year. You did it, and congratulations, and best wishes on your next moves forward, so.
Sal? Bridgette?
Thank you. I have a couple of reports from the PSBA weekly buzz that I attend, and Larry's on those calls, too. In the past two weeks, we've had one presentation from the Pennsylvania Department of Education on their plan for accelerated learning. That's the kind of re-engagement in getting schools to plan, prepare for having almost all kids be back in our school buildings next fall, with importance on addressing social emotional needs, high-quality academics, scaffolded supports, and healthy system conditions. And they encourage that the process for planning for next year is part of a regular cycle of improvement with stakeholder input, performance assessments, thoughtful use of technology, skill building, and all of that is to facilitate supportive learning environments. And then the second weekly meeting had a presentation from the Pennsylvania Association. career readiness, safety, and trauma responses, dealing with attendance and truancy issues, and also addressing suicide prevention and attention. And so they encouraged us to just take a look at our ratios and coverage for school counselors and how they serve our school. And I wanted to, in addition to saying how excited I am for graduation, in particular this year, I'm very much looking forward to it, I wanted to give a special thanks to Mr. Mullen. Last night, there was a broadcast of the senior awards, and it was held virtually for the second time, but it was done in 35 minutes. It was kind of amazing, and having it online had an additional benefit. This is a really busy time of year for everybody and the students, and so we were able to participate in Frisbee Senior Night in the stadium, and then go home and catch up and watch the awards afterwards, and so the community could tune in and see both the outpouring of support from different members of our community that honor and recognize and give tribute through scholarships and prizes to our students, and then to the wide range of students who are recognized for many different contributions that they have made in our schools and in our community. And like I said, it was in 35 minutes, so it's time well spent.
Thanks, Bridgette. I want to thank Blue Taylor for the organization and planning for that time capsule at Linwood. Thanks a lot, Blue. It sounds like it was a great event. I'm sorry I missed it, but I was out of town on vacation that week, so. For the board members who have not previously attended graduation in person, I will tell you that even when graduation is in an air-conditioned building, gowns are real hot, and I would suggest that you wear the lightest clothing you can underneath the gowns, and don't even think about putting a tie on. It's going to be 90 degrees, and we don't want anybody passing out during graduation.
Oh, and the turf is going to be like 15 degrees hotter, yeah.
Really selling it here, Larry.
Could have been last week. I feel like it was real nice, you know? Could have moved it up. It was like in the 60s, just a thought. Next year, calendar's not done yet, right?
Laura mentioned the Delaware County Legislative Breakfast, and that was Friday a couple weeks ago.
Right after our board meeting, yeah.
And we had about 70 or 80 board members and superintendents from Delaware County in attendance. The focus for the session was on charter reform. We had almost all of the Delaware County Legislative delegation present, so it was great to have the state senators and state representatives.
And Mary Gay.
And also, right, Congresswoman Mary Gay Scanlon attended the meeting, and it was great to have her and get the federal perspective on some of these issues. Our state rep, Mike Zabel, was one of our speakers, because he's on the House Education Committee, and State Senator Tim Carney, who covers eight or nine of our neighboring districts, was another featured speaker, as he's on the Senate Education Committee. We also had Frank Gallagher, who's the superintendent of the Satterton Area School District, as a featured speaker, because he's been very active statewide with superintendents organized for charter reform. In closing, I know my colleagues have offered their thanks, and I want to follow in that regard. It's not been the best year. Absolutely appreciate the efforts of our entire school community, superintendent, administrators, principals. I know that those folks pretty much worked 24/7 for 14 months, and, you know, I can't thank you enough.
Good team effort.
All of our teachers and support staff, maintenance staff, bus drivers, am I leaving anybody out? You know, it's just been a heck of a year, and students, parents, the whole community. I know it has not been a joyride, but it looks like we're rounding the clubhouse turn. We look forward to whatever the new normal is. We know it's not going to be like the old normal, you know, but we'll grow into it together. So I also want to thank all my fellow board members, especially the folks who haven't had any real board experience, that's normal. We don't always operate like this. You know, hopefully, I mean, it's nice to be back in person, and hopefully things will return to some sense of normalcy. So looking forward to seeing everybody at graduation, looking forward to seeing you on the job. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Thanks, everyone.